Hey Nancy, can you hear me okay?
I do, Gillian, I guess it's you and me huh?
Yes, and it looks like I'm gonna move Tim over to panelist.
Oh, okay.
You're, you're totally blue right now.
Oh, that's because I, I don't have my, my cybersecurity camera cover thing.
Alright, let me try again to move Tim over.
Anybody else here?
Um, not yet. We do have an attendee in the audience, Robin from the Gazette.
Oh, nice.
No, there's Tim. Tim, I'm trying to move over to panelist.
Okay, can you hear me? Join us.
Yes, we can hear you. And I just moved Dave over.
Okay. So I'm there.
There's David, okay. And I'm gonna move Judy over.
Good, good.
Hi Andrea, hi Judy.
Hi, I don't see me. Where am I?
Uh, you're on the panel. You're on. Is your, have you hit start video?
Let me give that a try double. There it is, thank you. Hey Tim, I'm not, um, we, Nancy and I did go to the fire station, but there's nothing saying we're gonna talk about that, I don't think.
You know what, Judy, we can talk about it under, um.
I mean, I saw it, talked about the fire station, but it didn't say we were gonna.
About the under goals, we can talk about it.
Okay.
I figured.
Okey dokey.
Okey dokey. That's what I'm gonna use. Everybody raise their hand and say okey dokey.
Okey dokey.
See, it works. See what time we got. Hopefully, we're gonna get a few more people.
Tim, did you hear? We have somebody in the audience from the Gazette.
Oh, really?
We better make it an interesting meeting.
Oh.
They're always interesting, come on.
I'm planning handstands and backflips. Well, we've got five of us, so the show can go on. I'd like to see a couple more get here though. We'll give it a couple more minutes.
Taking the minutes. Just a little one, but we could talk about it later. The July minutes.
Yeah, I agree. There's a few things on there we could talk about.
There we go. Hello Judith.
Everyone.
Hi.
TJ, welcome. Alright, we've got, uh, seven of us. That's more than enough to start the game here. Okay, well, we'll begin here. Welcome, everybody. Uh, this is the call to order. Uh, the, what's the date now? The July, the August 26th, uh, 2024 OSAC regular weekly, regular monthly meeting. And we have a couple of things to announce in the, uh, in the membership. First, it says in the, uh, agenda that we have one opening for an alternate. That's true right now. But we have one resignation too, and that's, uh, Steve Bremner has resigned, uh, as a full member. So there's an opening here for a full member, and, uh, I wanna say, uh, David, that that will be you. There's a couple of hoops we have to jump through first. Um, we'll need to get you to send, uh, me and the city clerk a, uh, an email stating that you're, you're, um, requesting to be, uh, promoted from a, uh, from an alternate member to a regular member, I think is the term we use there. And then at the next meeting, uh, we'll induct you in as a regular member.
Okay. I thought, I thought Steve was an alternate.
Steve was an alternate, I'm sorry, his resignation of an alternate member, so we, Steve is, uh, has resigned, and that puts you in first place, and so you'll be coming in as a regular member. But the reason you're coming in as a regular member is that Nancy Wilson, regrettably, is gonna request to be, uh, made an alternate member.
Okay, okay.
So we'll, we'll get all of the, uh, all of the, um, benefit of her genius, but she won't be able to vote. So. Okay, a loss, a loss, but not a terrible loss, so. So what we have to do there is for, uh, uh, Nancy to go through the hoops, jump through the hoops of, uh, becoming, going from being a full member to an alternate member, and oddly enough, they're requiring that we go through all the steps, or this is what the city clerk is saying, is we have to go through all the steps that we, except for filling out the, I don't think you have to fill out an application, do you Nancy?
Um, I don't, I don't, I don't think so, and.
You just have to do a request.
Yeah.
A request to, uh, the city clerk, and a request to me, that you're asking to become an alternate member. And then the city clerk has to provide papers to city council, and the city council has to vote on that. Now, I suspect we're gonna have the same rigmarole that's gonna be required for David to come as a full member.
And it has to be a letter, right? It can't just be an email. I mean, it has to be a letter attached to an email.
That sounds pretty official.
I don't know, that's what I've.
I don't think so, to go from alternate to, uh.
Well, maybe not from alternate, no.
To full member, cuz actually, I, I think all we have to do is, is once, uh, once there's an opening, I think all we have to do is vote for David, but, uh.
Already voted him on him once.
We've already voted him on it. We've already voted him in, but now we have to vote, the committee has to vote him on as a full member. I believe that's the case.
Probably.
But I don't see why we would have to go through the rigmarole of having him, uh, fill anything out for city council, but I wanna check some more on that.
You've already done that. You've already done that, right?
I know, we've, that's my point, that's my point. But you saw the, you just saw the email from, uh, um, uh, city clerk saying that we have to go through this in order to, for somebody to go from being a full member to an alternate member. Doesn't make a lot of sense. I'll check some more on.
I didn't think it made any sense at all.
Make sure it, uh, that that's correct. I'll, I'll check a little bit more on it. So. Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that I, and that I'm not sure if I'm on regular here, Mike.
You, you are regular, a regular member, yes.
No, no, I mean, on the meeting. I can't tell if.
You're on.
Okay, alright.
Tim?
David.
I had the same question Cheryl has. Uh, I'm just seeing six of us. You referenced TJ, is he, uh, participating by phone?
No, I'm eating ramen and, and it's kinda sloppy, so I'm saving you all the, um, the splash and everything, so give me about four more minutes.
Okay, well, it's the same as Cheryl, just wanted to know who we got, you know, who's, alright, thanks.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
And Robin, you were asked to be put on as an alternate member, correct?
Yes, I would be very happy to be an alternate member for now.
Okay, um, I see. Let's talk about that some more. I wanna talk you out of it. I would like to.
I'll take whatever comes, you know.
Okay, okay, um, let's keep going here, and let me go over to. Okay, so, uh, we now have, uh, we will have, uh, one, we'll, we'll still have one opening as an alternate, once Nancy goes to an alternate. And, uh, we'll, we have the resignation of Steve Bremner.
Wouldn't you have two then?
We would have two, no, we would only have one alternate because David and, and Nancy would be alternates, and then at the next meeting, we will promote David to being a full member at that point. And then we'll go back to, to having two openings for alternates. Um. Okay, so, uh, I'll be working with, uh, David and, and Nancy on making sure all of that happens. Uh, the next thing, approval of the minutes. I hope everybody had the, a chance to take a look at that. And I would like to say thank you to everybody. Um, I was not particularly well that day, and I showed it, and, uh, everybody else picked up the slack, and I sure appreciate it, and then the meeting went pretty well, all things considered. Things were, uh, it was a di- a different setup, and I was craning my neck everywhere to try and figure out who was saying what to whom. But it, but it turned out pretty well, so thanks, everybody. Um, anybody have comments on the minute, minutes?
I do.
Yes.
And I, and I think Andrea does too.
Okay.
Um, okay, first of all, under, uh, under, well, under Western Border Parcels Public, uh, number seven. Tim Beeson disagrees with the recall, but does say the board will make the best effort it can in discussions. I don't think he said that, Tim. I don't think we wanna have anything to do with discussions about the recall.
Um, yeah, it's not worded very well.
No, I don't wanna have anything to say about that at all. Let me get, let me get to this. What page are you on?
Of the, of the minutes, um, page four. Well, I'm on page four of sixty in the agenda, sorry.
Page four of sixty in the agenda, okay, thank you. No, I'm trying to do this with one screen now, which turns, turns out not to be a really good way of doing.
Yeah, really, I think it was, what Tim said is that the, the, uh, you said the board, I think it's really OSAC will just make its best efforts to facilitate discussions for the, uh, with Jenkins, something like that. Does that sound more appropriate?
Definitely more so.
Have fun.
Although, I don't, I don't know if we said we'd do that either.
Well, I think we did, uh, but I don't know if we need to say anything about the recall, cuz it's not our purview, and we don't have any say.
Yes, I, I did not say that.
Yeah, I, you didn't say anything about the.
No.
It was about the recall.
Okay, let's, uh, let's just cut out the last, uh, the last phrase, phrase there.
Well, and there's other things too. The next thing is that, you know, in, in this whole discussion about the Western Border Parcels, she never said anything about the resolution, um, that we eventually tabled, but, um, seems like that should be reflected in there. The resolution that Ken wrote and then was rewritten by, uh, the administrative assistant, and then.
Nancy, I'm not following. You want, let, on item six, you wanted to say that Linda made no reference to the resolution?
No, 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 I'm saying overall, in that whole discussion.
Okay.
Under Western Border Parcels, there was no mention of that resolution whatsoever.
Very good point, thank you.
Ken brought it up, and we, there was a big discussion, actually.
Right, so that's missing for some reason. I don't know if the microphone cut out or whatever, but it seems like it would be important to say that it was introduced, and then, uh, tabled, because we decided it was better to wait until we had.
Nancy, why don't you make a note on that? I didn't catch that. And it's a little hard to figure out where to put notes and stuff like that right now. So why don't you take a note and, uh, uh, provide that?
Who do I provide it to?
Yeah, who do you provide it to? Uh, um, Gillian, who's, uh, who's doing the minutes now?
So I, after each meeting, I let Alicia Stoke, our administrative assistant, know if the minutes are approved or not. So Nancy, if you could email me any of these, and I'm writing these down also, these corrections, um, I'll email them to Alicia.
Okay.
We'd vote on it next time, to, to approve, okay, as amended, got it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll do my best. Um, the other thing is, he, he, you know, they act through this whole thing, like we're, her wording through this whole thing sounds like we're gonna buy, or we're interested in buying, you know, the, the property, which, you know, we didn't really talk about that, other than finding out they wanted eighteen thou, eighteen million for it, so, yeah.
I didn't get that, but, uh, maybe I missed it.
Well.
Was it, was it something positive we said that we wanted to buy the property, or where did we imply that?
We didn't, really. Well, we said, we said, you know, basically, we said we couldn't afford it. Um, and no one is, we, no one knows of an asking price.
We did say though, that, like, we're aware of the parcel, or, you know, we're aware of the community's desire to purchase, or, you know, to acquire those at some point.
Right.
And that we are making some effort to try and do that.
Yep.
And then I think there was also a comment about the fact that the Jenkins, since the debacle about the survey, and then the Jenkins saying they're not coming to the previous, to the July council meeting in July. I think someone's, you know, said, we don't have, we're not, there's no discussion, we don't know, there's nothing happening right now.
Right.
And that's when Tim said, well, I would recommend that the mayor look into this, and that's when Linda got up again and got hostile.
That sounds accurate, yeah, to me.
Who, who got up and got hostile?
Linda Morland, remember she insisted.
Oh, oh.
And that's when Ken said, I want you to know, we're not involved in this mess. And she got up too.
Right.
But I.
I'll do my best to, to rewrite something, and you guys can have a go at it again next time.
Okay.
Well, I think it might help if you'd send that out sooner. Um, I don't know, Gillian, if, if we do that kind of communication, but trying to amend minutes on something this sensitive sixty days after the event, that's gonna be difficult, I mean, how good's your memory, what you did sixty days ago, so.
Tell them it's great, Julian.
Well, we all have the recording of the meeting.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, so we can, we can go back to the, whoever's, I guess, editing the minutes, we'll go back to that recording, uh, and then use the information provided by Nancy and, and what I've been jotting down, just to double check and make sure everything's accurate.
Okay.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
I have, I have some. Yeah, so, under number five, the same thing, but this, the first dot, Intiman, it says, the last sentence is, the what for of the property should be discussed. What's the what for?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that.
What is that? I, is that a technical term? I don't know what it is.
I have no idea with that sentence.
I think something needs to be corrected there.
Yeah.
Cuz I have no idea what that's about.
Is that a typo? That, yeah. I mean, do they mean purpose, or do they mean something else?
I don't know.
I don't know either.
And also, it says that I was not there. I absolutely was there.
Yes.
But I, I was sitting at home trying to get the computer to work, but it didn't. I drove down there, so I was about, I think, seven minutes late.
Well, that's important that we get you.
I was there.
Okay.
Because I, I mentioned in the minutes, but it says I wasn't there, which is pretty cool, but I was there. And I, there was another question I had too. And. Oh, never mind. I think I got it. Oh, oh, old business, yeah. Um. Okay, never mind, I know what that is now.
I, I have a question, and Andrea, you just said this, um, I know we said, you know, we'd love, love to have all that property if they were gonna give it to us, and, and when it came to discussion, Tim spent quite a while explaining our budget, but Andrea, do you feel like we said we would follow up with Jenkins, that OSAC would follow up with Jenkins? Cuz I didn't get that.
Nope. Um, what, uh, I personally have reached out once, um, and have never heard back. So I don't know if anybody else has had any success with that, um, but I think that, you know, generally, it's great if we can reach out to landowners like that, you know, every, some period of time. You know, to say, hey, we're interested if you ever, you know.
Yeah.
I've got, I've got a message out to them as well, and, uh, we'll certainly report anything that results from them.
Okay, good. Because I got stopped on the street today by one of the members of the Friends of Ruxton Canyon, and basically, she said, you're not gonna do anything, and I said, there, you know, there, it hasn't been listed for sale, we haven't, you know, uh, doesn't sound like he's, he's, uh, giving it to us, and, and it doesn't sound like he's going to city council right now, so I don't know what else we could do, except what you've done, Tim, and what you've done, Andrea, and I think that's kinda where we're at.
Leave a horse's head in his bed.
I'll, I'll make, I'll make a stab.
That worked for the Godfather anyway.
I'll get with Gillian, and we'll make a, a stab at this, and you guys will have one more chance to go over it at the next meeting, before they're approved.
Okay, yeah, there's not much we can do if, uh, the person doesn't wanna talk to us.
Well, again, but Tim, you did say, I mean, you said it right to everybody, that, um, if somebody was gonna reach out, you thought, and I'm, I'm pretty positive you said this, um, and, cuz that's what launched Linda, is you thought that Mayor Graham was the person to do it, and that's when she wanted to come up.
Mayor Graham has done that, uh, a couple of times, both.
But I, I'm just saying. And then you, you know, you said, well, we'll just think about it, but.
Okay, well, great. Any other comments on the, on the minutes? Thank you for taking the time to look at that, too. Um, okay, we will have another go at this, uh, uh, next month. As far as, uh, circulating that again, I don't know, that's kind of, uh, That's kind of uh, we can't do a back and forth. Uh, Jillian can send that out to. Everybody, but you've already got it. You've already got this information, so I guess anybody that that uh can find the time, just go in and. Um, do another uh slice of this and we'll, we'll see if we come up with anything new. And we'll make sure all of that gets to our stenographer, whoever it is, to do this. You know, Jillian, I suggested one time that we uh turn on uh the stenographer for Zoom. The automatic stenographer. Um, that just writes everything down that's said. And then that feed that to uh Microsoft's Copilot, which is their AI. And tell it that we want minutes to come back. And people have had pretty good luck with stuff like that. We might try it one time and see how it comes out. It would probably be a uh small revolution for uh some of the workload. For us, yeah, yeah, Judith.
Oh, just a recommendation only, um, just uh if you're going to revise minutes, this, this is what council does. A motion needs to be made to table approval of the minutes pending corrections. And then you just bring it back to the next meeting or a special session if you're that, you know, interested. But it typically, it's good to have a motion to um uh to amend the minutes prior to approval.
Okay, um, make an amendment, Judy?
Yeah, I make a motion that we. Amend uh revisit these uh.
We tabled, tabled the minutes?
Yeah.
Bring it up at the next meeting for approval.
I second that.
Okay, everybody in favor, raise your right hand or any hand at all. Everybody votes yes and.
Oh, wait a minute, wait, um.
Oh, we should, we should have a discussion about minutes being approved.
No, I was just wondering about is, since Dave is not yet a member, can can alternate?
I'm sorry, do we have, uh, we already have.
Thank you.
Um, seven people, eight people here.
Right.
Seven. Wait a minute.
I'll second the motion to table the minute until they are amended and approve approval for next meeting.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. David, don't vote. Thank you. And Andrea, are you voting? Oh, okay, a thumb and a hand. Okay, um, thank you. We'll go on to the next item. Which is uh um agenda review and public comment on non-agenda items. So does anybody have anything to say about the agenda? And if not, we'll go on to uh public comment on non-agenda items. We have somebody from the uh. From the Gazette here. Does that person wanna make a comment?
Robin, would you like to make a comment? I'm not hearing anything.
Okay, then we'll carry on.
They're muted, though. Right.
Are they muted?
Looks like it.
They're, they're allowed to unmute, so I, I allow them to talk, so if they wanted to make a comment, they could just unmute.
Okay. All right, going once, going twice, so. Next item is uh uh comments on the uh Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We have two um uh sets of minutes, uh one for June third and one for July eighth. Does anybody have a comment on the June third uh pair of minutes? Yeah, Nancy.
Um, under their uh old business number or letter C. Um. Let's see, I'm in the right place. Well, actually, I'll just jump to letter um E. It's, it's about rezoning the Becker's Lane pro- property. This is the property that we wanted to give to Parib. And under E, it says vote on rezoning from open space to parks. A motion was made and it was, it passed unanimously. Um, so I know one of the things on our, on our, in our bucket has been uh to formally. Give that property to them, so we're not responsible for it anymore, and I'm just wondering. Jillian, since they've approved it and we've approved it, what else? Is holding us up?
That's a great question. Um, hopefully not me, but I I will check with our planning director tomorrow uh on this. I know that I let him know that Parib had approved the. The rezoning from open space to parks, so I'll check in and see what the next steps are.
There was, there was actually, I'm sorry, Jillian, I interrupted.
No worries.
Didn't mean to. Um, uh, there was actually a whole series of steps that we had to go through this. And that's where the hangup is because uh Danu doesn't wanna get it started until after the first of the year. What it involves is her and I, number one, uh, and OSAC and and Parib. Each voting that we wanna do this.
We've done that.
I know we did. Uh, and the next step is that we have to go down to a planning meeting. And we both have to give reason why we wanna do this. Um, then after that, there's another meeting that we have to go to, and this is why Daniel was. A little irritated at the whole process, another meeting that we have to go through too, and uh. I don't know what we have to do with that one. I I ran out of steam studying that at that point, but. It will go, it will be a series of, it'll be a process. And we do intend to do that, and I talked to Danu uh this week, and she said. I just wanna put it off to the, to next year. So, and we can't, we can't go without her. We can't move without her, so she she wins in that battle. Okay.
Well, she's my neighbor, I'm gonna talk to her.
Go talk to her, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if she doesn't wanna go, somebody else can go. I mean. I think what it was is we had a couple planning commission meetings we had to go to, right? Do this, or maybe planning commission and then city council approval?
Now, what are you saying?
I think it was just planning commission we have to go to, and then we have to go to city council.
And then we have to go to city council, yeah. Um, why we're at the council is another question.
Um, easily done. I'm gonna see if we can get on, I'm gonna talk to Danu and see if we can get on the agenda at the planning commission.
Go for it.
Okay.
Growl. Okay.
For Pete's sake.
Anything on the uh, anything more on the July third uh pair of minutes? Anything on the July, how do we get to a July eighth? That's only five days between. Anybody, anything on the July eighth meeting?
I just have a question.
Yeah, Judy.
This, is this now public knowledge about John Weiss on upcoming, they're talking about Cheyenne Village property? I mean, I didn't, I.
All the comments about Cheyenne Village property.
Hoping to place an offer is what it says and.
Um, yeah, we'll see what happens to that. Right now, as far as I know, there's, there's no pending offer. Do you know, Jillian? If there's a pending offer on Cheyenne Village?
I'm not sure.
Okay. I believe there is, come to think of it. I believe there is. Um, I have no idea who made the offer or whatever. But I did notice in a pair of notes that there were a number of people chining in saying that we. Should try and make our uh our park area bigger. And my thought about that is we can, we can make it bigger and. Take more of a chunk out of the purchaser and the developer, but that's not necessarily a wise thing to do.
I don't think.
Don't, we don't wanna. The profit to the point where people have to scrimp in order to get this project done. It's a big project. There's a lot of risk involved. And I think we wanna think twice before we start uh nipping away at at their profit margins. Yeah, Nancy.
I don't think, I don't think we even have a choice. Those are, that's all in code. It's all in code, how much property they have to give us or can give us, all that, so I, we don't have.
We could have took, taken more. Um, OSAC did not. And there was a good reason for doing that, if you want.
I thought we gave our chunk to Parib.
No, we did.
No, we can't do that. You can't do that.
Can't?
Turns out that you cannot do that. You cannot transfer. It's the same issue of transferring. Funds between uh different organizations and stuff, but we can um. Determine not to take uh our, our piece of, and we did that for a good reason, and we can come back to that if you like. Um, we'll, we'll certainly have another opportunity to do that. Okay. New business, and this is a fun one. I hope everybody had the time to uh look at this, and it was kind of a time. Time cr- uh sync to go in and listen to the whole conversation. And then go hike the uh Burns Road, which is just interesting enough to to make it worth your while. So um, does anybody have comments on the Burns Road? Uh, I should. Call it something a little bit different than that. Um, the uh, trying to remember the. See, that was page, what pages are people on on that?
Seventeen is where the map is.
Yep, sixteen and seventeen.
Yeah, thanks. Um, we get over to that for just a second. Sixteen seventeen, yeah, what I'm looking for is the. Name of the property owner, which is Hopper Davis. So the Hopper Davis uh parcels, yeah, David.
Just some background, how has the city and OSAC handled the other? Very steep parcels like the FEMA parcels behind Mansions Park. Um, cause it strikes me, this is. Extremely steep hillside, supports the highway. Um. So I just, I don't have any historic context for how the committee or the city has handled similar parcels.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question, and we don't have much information on that either. We had, we were gifted. If you wanna call it that. Um, about uh, how many parcels were there? About fifty parcels in that miscellaneous parcel. Um, uh, analysis that we did. You've, you've got a copy of that, David. And since then, since we went through that and we, we did that analysis, nothing's been said about it. Um, that uh, that document, which is actually two documents, two sets of data. Oh, with sixty, sixty pieces. Nobody's said anything about it one way or the other. Um, within the introduction to that document, it said, hey, we're basing this on uh um. Dylan Becker's information. Um, we do not know that. All these parcels are identified as open space. We do not know if there are other pieces that are miscellaneous pieces. So there's a lot of information out there that we don't know about. Plus, your question, David, we don't have any current information. At least I don't. I've only been here four years or so, so uh maybe TJ or Andrea can remember when we were. Quote gifted a problem piece of property and what we did.
What piece of property?
No, what I'm saying is I'm, I'm wondering if anybody recalls any time that we were given. A piece of property that was questionable as to whether or not OSAC wanted to accept it.
We have had discussions about some properties.
Hold on, hold on, Nancy, please. Go ahead, Nancy.
Well, I think I've been on. OSAC the longest and, and I don't recall ever being gifted a piece of property. Um, at all, and just a little background, what happened, what happened with this is the. It came before council and the recommendation, I believe, and and Judith, you can correct me. But in, in a discussion with um, with our city administrator. She said, having looked at it and having, having had a. Oh, you know, the guys from um. Water and sewer and roads look at it, that they didn't want it, and they recommended not accepting it. And then two members of council said, oh, I think we should. Accept it, and then council kicked it to us, so.
That's where we're at right now.
That's how it happened, and this is the only time in ten years I've, I've seen it happen. Um, like this, and I'll say, uh, I've, I've spent some time up there too, and, and the reason that, that. Roads and bridges and all those guys said they didn't want it is because it's an erosion nightmare.
Right.
And uh, it is an erosion nightmare. I happened to go up there right after we had a pretty good gully washer several weeks ago and.
Now, you're talking about, you're talking about Burns Road now, not the other property. Yeah, okay.
And, and uh, knowing that the city doesn't really want it.
Yeah, why would we want it?
Also, and we, I don't think we'd want it. I think it would be a headache. I think uh the city already owns a parcel up there that's kind of part of this whole thing. And if we really wanted to put a bench up there or something, but I. I mean, I don't, I don't think we'd wanna have anything to do with it. It looks like a maintenance nightmare.
Okay, any, anybody got anything else to say about that?
Uh, well, I have a couple things.
Yeah.
It just, um, this is Robin. I, with all these miscellaneous lots, it seems to me. That the city. Just put all the miscellaneous lots that were either uh taken over by FEMA. And, and given to the city, and you know, this, it's, it's in the city's purview to say. You can't let anyone build on this, but it, it, you know, probably how it works is. It is, it goes to the city and, and that's where it ends up. Um, so I think a lot of these lots end up going to the city because I don't know that we have any other. City property other than property that the city works with, literally. So they, we're just kind of a little bit of a dumping ground for miscellaneous lots. But, but also with, with this Burns Road, uh, we would be responsible for maintaining. The erosion control, so to me, we would take on a lot of expense dealing with. I mean, hu- humongous boulders that are up there, that are just waiting to slide off at some point, so. And then under our uh purview of, of what we look as uh being. Property that we would want, uh, the only one would be the view shed. And as, as a neighbor who it literally sees that property every day. Um, if someone built there, which the city said you can't, um, I don't see that as a view shed either. So I, I'm not impressed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We're getting a lot of great input here. Yes, Nancy?
Oh, just one more thing is that it isn't buildable, and so. It, the, the, the view shed is preserved in, in, in my opinion, or at least, yeah, if. If the city won't allow anybody to build up there, why should we buy it in order to make sure nobody builds up there?
TJ, did you have something to say? No, um, you know, the one thing that I would say is that I did hike up there. And it is a beautiful view from up there. But uh, putting any kind of trail up there that we would, we would uh wanna recommend people hike on. I mean, there's a, there's a slab going up like this that you can just walk up with a pair of poles anyway, hiking poles. And it's, it's kind of a neat spot up there, but the only way that I would think we should take it on is if the city agrees that. They're responsible for any of the uh, the rockslide, any of the, the water runoff. And any possible um uh other uh uh work that needed to be done on the road. In which case, they probably don't. In which case they probably don't care if we want it or not. Cause we're sending, we're sending everything back to them. It's, it's like you said at one time, Nancy, just because it's uh, we can't find a use for it, doesn't mean that it's not open space. So maybe you can make an argument for that. Yeah, Judy?
I was gonna say Andrea had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Andrea.
You did?
Andrea, did you have your hand up?
Yep, um. I mean, actually, I'd say my comments are covered. But I will say like that it's interesting, like the wording, I think, that just that saying that um, OSAC take responsibility for deciding whether the city should accept the donation, like what does that mean exactly?
Well, that's, that's our job, one of our jobs is to uh
Decide if we want it for open space or trails or whatever.
Yeah. My, my view on this uh is that uh the kind of stuff that they would perhaps want us to take care of, roads, uh, road maintenance, um, the runoff, the erosion from the water and the landslides that might, might occur are stuff that OSAC doesn't have any business doing. It's not our job. Um, and to slough it back on us to make the recommendations, that's fine. But we could make that recommendation, but only under the circumstances that they explicitly took responsibility for the kind of stuff they're worried about. Yeah, Judy?
I, I'm, I'm just, if there was a rock slide and you're talking about onto Burns Road, is that what you're saying? Well, we have to pick it, clean it up anyway, right? Is that an access road to homes?
Yeah, it's a city street.
So they would have to do it anyway. So what do we even need to think about it for? I don't think we should even pursue it because I think, as they say in the movies.
Well, I think we're kind of trying to force that onto us, so. We want, that's, that's what I'm saying. We'd have to say explicitly that we are not taking that responsibility.
It also doesn't fulfill much of the post-plan requirement, uh, our guidelines. It doesn't connect to anything else, as I can see.
Not at all. Yeah, Judy. Judith, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you. Um, so so the uh land donation issue came to city council and um there was a pro and con discussion. And since there was not unanimous uh concurrents one way or the other, several council members, myself included, um, felt that it was um out of certainly respect for your expertise, important to get your input. The, the task that, that council is giving OSAC is not to decide yea or nay, should we uh, you know, uh, what can be done with it or not, is to, to just for you to give a council direction on whether you um, you know, your thoughts, your thoughts, you know, pro and con. Um, the ultimate decision is still gonna have to be, you know, up to city council. Um, and while I do very much respect um the city's um recommendation, there are many factors to be considered um, when you're looking at, you know, should we accept a donation of land and cue, including view shed, potential trail connectivity, so on and so forth. Um, it is my understanding that, that the city um has two, uh, I'll call them easements um for roads that are not built up there. It's, it's just so we, we do have some liability anyway. Um, and I do not know the extent to which that land is developable. I, one of the things that caught my attention in your um catalog of uh, open space parcels, which is really, really incredible. Um, I think it was like right around page thirty-three, you had a uh, mention of thirty-nine Barnes, Burns Road, which is that piece on the end. And one of the questions that several city council members had, myself included, was was just to make sure that we had your expertise and thoughts on, would it be possible to connect that a piece on the end with any potential land donation? So um, so we, I just, I hope you don't think that we were trying to dump this decision on you. We just really wanted your um expert thoughts and opinions um prior to making a final decision.
Okay. Um, as far as connecting that with uh, with the uh um, other parcels that are being donated is that there's a, there's a chunk of private property in between the ones that Manitou owns and that other piece of property. So yeah, if we could buy that other piece of property or get somebody to donate it to us, we'd end up with um, just about uh, I think about one point two acres up there. And then we still have the question of who's doing the, the heavy lifting for maintenance on that. It cannot be OSAC. You would bankrupt OSAC um, in short order if we started taking on property and responsibilities like that. Yeah, Nancy?
Well, um seems like we ought to cut to the chase. Council wants a recommendation from us. And, and um, I don't know, I would go and make a motion that we say to council, something like, OSAC does not see this as a necessary uh addition to our, what do you call it, when you have a whole bunch of property, to our portfolio um of property for the following reasons. It's too steep. It doesn't connect with any, it doesn't provide trail connections because of the, I mean, we could ma- make a list or we could just make a recommendation to council that um it not be accepted.
Um.
That we have no.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm kind of in the middle on this because it is a beautiful view up there. It's a a nice piece of property if it wasn't falling down and washing away and creating a massive liability.
Well, and this is my fault. Open space, one acre, I don't know, we've never had this discussion, but I think in most places, an acre isn't an open space. You know, it's not that big. And, and we've already screwed up kind of buying that tiny space on the river, although I think our, our intentions were good because Parib wasn't gonna buy it and we want to preserve it. We want to preserve that riparian access and it checked a lot of the boxes. But for us to ac- acquire more tiny parcels, especially tiny parcels with huge maintenance issues, um, even though the city has to, I'm sure, continue to maintain that road because it's a city road and there's a, a private home at the end of it. But why we want to get mixed up in it is kind of beyond me.
Yeah, okay. I was, I was trying to take both sides and, and kind of thinking it through. Um, anybody else have a positive view of that property? No. Uh, well, yeah, you're not a voting member, Judith.
I just wanted to say, uh, not for me personally, but there are several people in council that um are, are maintaining an open mind um, and want to discuss it a little further uh based on um, Tim, your comments on, on it as a view shed uh and so on. So um, I, I think there, there, uh, we re- highly respect OSAC's opinion and um, I, I just want to say more discussion will be had, but your input is very important in the ultimate decision that the city uh, you know, ta- the council takes in, in deciding whether the city should take responsibility for this open space piece.
I know council wants a response uh quickly because the uh, the uh beneficiary wants this uh figured out by September, the beginning of September. So I would recommend.
I make, I would move that um, we send a letter to council. Let, well, wait a minute, that we, I would move that we uh not that we recommend that OSAC is not interested in accepting the donation of this property. Choose us not to accept the donation of this property or would recommend that we not.
Recommend that council doesn't.
Yeah.
Recommend that council doesn't, I think.
Right.
Well.
Ask us how a recommendation.
That's okay. The one recommend, the recommendation that you made is the only recommendation that we have to make, which is that OSAC is not interested in accepting that property. And I get, we can throw together some reasoning for that, which I think we've heard a, a good deal of.
But can I second the motion?
What's that?
Can I second the motion?
Please do, yeah.
I second.
All right, we can, now we can, the way this goes, supposed to go, is we have a conversation, then there's a motion, and then, then we have a conversation about the motion. And the motion is pretty terse.
Maybe I should re, I should say it again.
Say it again.
I move that OSAC inform council that we do not choose to accept the donation of the property that.
I, I would insert the word recommend in there.
Recommend.
Yeah, we, cause we always make recommendations.
Yeah.
How about we just say we recommend council does not accept the property for open space?
I think that's good. Nice. I think that's good.
Okay.
Thank you, Judith. Um, do I, Robin, you want to second that motion? Seconds.
Miss Robin?
Yes, I second.
Oh.
That's my son. That was Robin. Um, can we see a show of hands for everybody in favor of accepting that motion? I think I'm gonna withhold judgment on this one. Okay?
Can't. No, seriously, Tim, if you're not, if you're gonna recuse yourself, you have to give a reason.
I'm not recusing myself. I'm, I'm saying that I would vote uh to accept it with a lot of caveats. Okay?
So you're voting against it?
So I'm voting against it, yeah. Okay. Um, but it's fine by me. We, I think we've got this taken care of. Um, we just have one, one person voting against it. So. All right. Um great, I, I think we'll have to, well, I think I'll end up go- going to the uh, the city council meeting with this, with this and having to provide a little bit more information. That's fine. Um, let's move on. And where we at? The next thing is uh to review the twenty twenty-four budget. And um, I'm gonna ask Robin to do that. I'm gonna have to take this and use this to, and some pictures to provide a uh, uh briefing to council about OSAC's uh twenty twenty-five budget. And there's a little sleight of hand here, so pay some, pay attention. Robin?
Okay, so uh, the sleight of hand, um, I'm going to give a little bit of uh background on governmental accounting. Uh, so the way the, the government works and especially for their budget, now this is how I'm understanding it. So when, when any of us have a budget, you cannot go over budget, you know, the, the public doesn't like when the government goes over budget. And, and when they do, it's, it's a big deal, you know, like for us, city council has to come in and really go over why we're over budget. So when you have a normal department like, say, streets, you kind of know what's going on. You, you know, the, the budget for the amount of money coming in, you know what streets need to be done and how much they're gonna cost and you can line up, okay, here's our budget. And it's kind of cut and dry somewhat. But for OSAC, we're very different and because we're an opportunistic organization, we never know when and an opportunity is going to come around to purchase a property. And so what we have done is pretty much taken all of our money and thrown it into the budget. And we have left ourselves with forty thousand left. And when we don't spend it, that's fine. It just carries over to the next year and you create a new budget. And you allow yourself that if there's this great property and you need most of the money to buy that property and, and that is the only way we can do it, then we have it in the budget to do it. And, and the way we have divvied out for maintenance, land acquisition, uh, you know, all, all the little line items, it doesn't really matter if one light item goes over budget, say, maintenance goes over budget. That doesn't really matter as long as the overall budget does not go over. So that is why we have put the whole four hundred thousand into land acquisition just to cover ourselves that if something came up, we, you know, as long as city council approves it, uh, we, that is there for us if we needed it. And, you know, if we don't buy any property, then that four hundred thousand just rolls over to the next year, which is, you know, usually what happens. And then it just goes into the next budget and, and we go from there. So uh, we, you know, used some uh, usual numbers for maintenance and some of the fees that are coming up for Black Canyon and um, other things for for surveys and things like that. But um, in a way, I hate to say it, you know, the budget doesn't really matter because here's how much we could spend and this is a generalization of, of the budget. So it's not really nitpicking important of, of specific numbers. There you go.
I'll say a few things about that as well. By the way, can you all see me when I, when I do this? Am I still visible? Okay, I'm, I'm covering everything up here. I've got uh too much junk on, on the screen. Yeah, I just wanted to point out a few things here. If you look at the budget, just like Robin was saying, uh, you'll go in and you'll see this four hundred thousand dollars. Not only will that roll, but, okay, a couple of things are rolling over into the twenty twenty-five budget as well. So if you go down to where you see acquisition costs, uh, excuse me, capital acquisition costs. And that line is uh, the last three digits are seven one zero, capital acquisition, land. And that's always our biggest, uh, our biggest spending bucket. We now have two hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four. Uh, it was increased from a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand because we spent a hundred thousand already or very close to it on the West Side LLC property. So we just, we had the money, um, and we, and we increased that to two hundred thousand dollars. So if something came up, we'd have a couple of hundred thousand dollars that we could spend on it. We started out um with just uh a hundred thousand dollars and then we increased it to two hundred thousand dollars. And now we've, we've decided in, for twenty twenty-five, we're just gonna uh, throw almost everything into the pot. And that bucket is capital acquisitions. And if anything else goes over budget, we can take from that pot of money. The the problem, the, the problem that I see with this, it's not a problem. As Robin explained, it's not a legal problem, but the fact is then we don't have anything that says, this is actually how much money we plan on spending. Because we don't have anything that we're spending to, we don't have any purchases planned for twenty twenty-five. We have nothing
Yet.
up right there. So, so unless something, unless we have an opportunity, we will roll over that whole four hundred thousand dollars. The other thing I want to point out is, and, and we won't go into the weeds too far here. But the other thing I want to point out is that uh, let's see, down here where is that? Okay, down here at line, uh, the last three digits, eight four zero, grant match, we have a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. That rolled over from, from uh from twenty twenty-three. Not sure if I see that. But this just keeps rolling over because we haven't spent it yet. We keep waiting. We've had a couple of years now where we had that money that was set. That's a grant match for uh both the uh, El Paso County grants and for the state grants, um, eighty-eight thousand for one fifty-something. both the El Paso County grants and for the state grants, eighty-eight thousand for one, fifty-something thousand for the other. And that keeps rolling over until we do something. Right now, we're just putting, pushing off Phase Six of Creek Walk. And as long as we do that, that hundred and thirty-eight thousand is rolling over. So we have a number of items like that, which is just money that's rolling over. And we've really got about six hundred thousand dollars. That's what our bank account's gonna look like. And that's something that I'll, I'll get very specific on and, and brief on at the city council meeting when that comes up. Yeah, Nancy.
If you're done.
I'm done.
Okay. I, I'd point out a, a couple of things, too. And I, I love what you guys have done here. I guess that four hundred K is, you know, kind of a, like you said, if we're over on anything else, but we will have some major expenses if we proceed with Black Canyon. We'll have, we could have a, a master plan that could pay out well over fifty, sixty thousand dollars. And then trail building on Black Canyon, if we hire folks to do that, will also be a major expense. So trail building and maintenance, you know, right now, you have seventy thousand in there. We could go well over that or under, you know, part of that could be under professional services for, for a master plan. And then, and then.
That's why we, you know, put most of it in the land acquisition because specifically the buckets don't really, you know, today matter as long as the, the budget says we can spend that much. And then, yeah, when, when the trail building in the black space happens for a hundred and twenty, we can pull that from the land acquisition, move that over.
Right, right. That's great. I understand that. I just want people to be aware of, you know, we're looking at, we're not really looking at six hundred K, I don't think. We may not spend very much more still the rest of this year, but we don't know. But we, we definitely have some irons in the fire that we're gonna need to spend some money on. I'm also concerned about the.
Little bit more when we get to Black Canyon.
There will be more money on Grant Match and the Hickinbotham Connection and a lot of other.
Right, right. And that, that's one of the things that I have to, I have to provide some numbers on for city council so that we're not just saying we've got this bucket of eight hundred thousand dollars that we're just grabbing from. You know, we have to say specifically how we're spending that money. And we will with, with that, with that briefing. Okay. Robin, anything else?
No, that's it. I'm done.
Okay. Everybody halfway satisfied with this?
Tim, I had a question.
Yeah.
The building on Nancy's comment that we have accompanying expenditures, one of them is the, the request for proposal for the contractors to repair the erosion blowout up on Oak Ridge on Iron Mountain.
Right, right.
Is that included in the seventy thousand trail building and maintenance?
That is included in the seventy thousand. And we'll be asking some questions of that when we get to trail building.
Okay.
Trail maintenance, okay. All right. Ready, set, go.
So what do you need on this emotion or what?
Nothing at all. No, I don't think we need anything at all. It's just, it's, it's actually, it's not our work. It's, it's finances work. They do that and we, we go in and we help them decide what the numbers should be. Then they, they come, they come out with a chart and it becomes the law of the land.
The budget, the whole budget is approved by council.
Yeah. So, go ahead. Who's speaking?
I have a question.
Judith.
Right about towards the middle, it says noxious weed mitigation. Are you saying that money is for the whole city or that's kind of sort of a portion?
City to the, in the sense that we're, we're the whole city for.
Just for the, just for the open space portion of the city.
Right.
Ah, okay, okay. Thank you.
And that's another thing that's rolling over every year is noxious weed mitigation because there's no noxious weed mitigation being done.
Well, the city is doing some.
Or at least no, none being paid for.
Not on, not on open spaces.
Yeah, not on open space. Okay.
Now Judy, just to clarify, our budget is completely separate from the city budget. Other than we have to go through this rigmarole to have their, their approval. This, this has nothing to do with the general fund.
Right, no, I, I understand that. I did, what I didn't understand was whether this, I, we're not doing anything on noxious weeds, but the city is, and that's their budget.
And that's one of those things that keeps rolling over.
Okay.
So old business, Creek Walk Phase Six, I doubt we have anything to say about that. Anything new coming up?
Nothing. Haven't heard a thing from anybody.
Okay, okay. We'll keep, we'll, we'll keep that on the list and hopefully things will start to move. I imagine our system, our city engineer.
Continuing to talk about it. But I said, it looks like Parab is continuing to talk about it.
There's, there's a meeting on Hickinbotham plots anyway coming up, so we'll see how that turns out.
A council meeting or?
What's that?
Meeting with who?
No, I'm not sure who it is. I, I talked to Dan New and she wasn't sure who, what was going on there either. Jillian, do you have any more information?
Yeah, basically, yeah, the meeting is just to make sure that we have our timelines all set up because we have Black Canyon, open space, the, the mini master plan or the vision plan going on. And then we have the master plan for Hickinbotham. So Denise just wants to make sure that no one's getting overloaded when we're doing these multiple plans. And then we have also Creek Walk Phase Four and Phase Six happening at the same time. So there, there are a lot of projects going on in the city and we want to make sure that everyone is on the same page with the timelines essentially.
Okay, great. Well, I'm glad we have Kilmer Horn working on this. We'll get to that in just a second.
Is that, is that a, a meeting with whom? I mean, is that in?
Uh, that, that's a meeting that the city staff has called that Dan New and I are going to, are gonna be in along with. Okay, more new business. Fields Park, I don't think we're gonna have anything more to say about that, much to say about that. Anybody have any comments on that? I, I have one question on that for Jillian. I'm, this isn't a, a slight on you guys, but everybody's, everybody's got work piled on top of work with you. And I'm wondering if, if we ought to just pay somebody to take care of the, the trimming and getting rid of the fence. Is, is that ever gonna happen? And it seems like, it seems like this is acting more as a stack than a queue where it's first in, first out. Now it's first in, last out. It's just getting piled on top of it.
Well, I'll say it'll get done a lot faster if you do pay someone, if we can contract it out. But right now, our number one goal with our forestry division is brush mitigation along Creek Walk Trail. So I don't know if you guys have noticed, but we've been doing a ton of brush removal from Creek Walk path in between the Chamber of Commerce and Old Man's Trail. They're the soft surface path, not the sidewalk. But our arborist has been instructed to get down there and remove hazard trees, do hazard tree pruning. And we did just hire a new forestry technician, so that should speed that up a little bit. But it's just the, the hazard tree pruning along that section of the Zero Becker's Lane property, it's just not a priority at this time. So we need to get that Creek Walk path finished before we can move on to other projects. So it's in the queue, it's just not very high in the queue. And that's, that's the holdup.
Okay, Nancy?
Yeah, I don't think we should do anything to that property. We're trying to give it to, to Parab and they want to do a plan for it. And, and who knows?
Well, part of what we're paying for is, is the hazardous tree and trimming. And, and the, we've agreed to pay for the removal of the fence, too. So those are two things that we do need to, we're on the hook for. Okay, so, and it's, it would make it a lot more sightly for the neighbors living along that creek in there if we, if we took care of that. I'm just throwing it out there. Anybody else have any thoughts about that? Should we actually pay for this to be done? I don't know how much that would cost. Jillian, you had numbers for the fence removal at one time?
I do. I don't remember them right now. We, we do have a quote for the fence removal and then I'm happy to get a quote for the hazard tree pruning and send it out if that would be helpful.
Yeah, if we can do that without causing any heart, heartbreak for one of our contractors if we didn't do the job. You know, if we chose not to do the job. I know you had somebody that you were, you were fond of for this kind of work. So maybe we ought to get, get a quote on that. And if, if it's something, you know, in the sub five thousand dollar range, we might want to go ahead and do it. Okay. We'll wait for that. Okay, Bilbauer Trail Development. Let's see, Fields Park, says Bilbauer Trail Development. I've got something to say about that just because I called up Larry, Larry Rose, who is the guy that owns the property that we were hoping to get a gift from. And that was gonna happen when the property was subdivided. And there was some surveying that would have to be done at that time. And unfortunately, planning nixed the subdivision. They said he could only have one lot there because of steepness of the property. And I heard from Larry about that, that I asked him where we were at maybe a couple of weeks ago. And I heard back that this was the situation. I wrote back to him and said, is, is this gonna have any impact on whether or not OSAC receives the, the very generous gift of property that you were gonna make? And I haven't heard back from him since then, which is not heartwarming. I don't see where it would make much difference at this point with, he's still gonna build a house there. He's still gonna have a, a parcel to sell if he sells a parcel or builds that house. So why wouldn't he give us the piece that he was gonna give us anyway down there if he did two houses? I don't know. I'm just hoping that's not the case. And I hope, hoping it's not the case that he's just trying to sell the property now and figures it's worth more with the, with the size of the lot. If he just keeps it together. So, you know, this is one of those things, we, we might have a a serious hiccup in this and not just a time delay.
At the pinch point, that piece probably were.
Well, it's kind of at the pinch point, but it's even more than that. What we found out when we were down there with a, a couple of GPS applications is that the pinch point is actually way further up on the side of the hill there than we thought it was. It's not down close to the creek at all. So we're hoping we would get that other piece of property. And I had talked to Larry about this and he said, that's no problem at all. And hopefully it's still no problem at all. And I'll get hold of him. Okay. Anybody else have anything to say? TJ, you've got a vested interest in this.
No, it sounds like everybody's on top of it. And I mean, the only other thing I could suggest is if it's, if that pinch point is in an area that's still unbuildable, that maybe whoever acquires that property, we just approach them with an easement coming up in a, in a little while.
Right, right. Well, we will certainly do that. And with luck, they could get something of a, of a tax credit on this. Tax credit, taxi on this. So that's what we got rolling for us. Okay.
Just one side note. I happened to talk to two people who live across from Bilbauer Park and asked, you know, just asked them what they thought about traffic through there and stuff. And, you know, would it, would it be used? Would kids use it to get to school and that kind of thing? And they thought definitely, they thought if the trail was built, it would be used by the, by the neighborhood for what that.
Well, maybe. We'll see if that's buildable as a multi-use trail. And we had some negative feedback on that from Remfy. As everybody will recall, and we'll be down there looking at that again. Okay. Well, one thing I wanted to mention on this, Nancy and TJ, you both brought up the point that building a temporary trail down near the water had, had its drawbacks in that we would end up having the problem of destroying that temporary trail so that we didn't have people using it after it was no longer temporary, after we built the final trail. Well, how do we get people down there to use it to look at and give us their opinion on how it should be used unless we have some way for them to walk down along the creek? So we gotta get people down there if we want people's opinions. So we might have to do something temporary down there just to get people down looking at it.
But Tim, it sounds like then you're just inviting them to trespass on Rose's property.
Well, right now we are.
Yeah.
Right now, right now we are. We don't have this problem coming up immediately. Once we get the, once we get the easement or the property, then we will.
Okay.
We, we wanted to get community input on that, but the only way we can get community input on that is actually have them go down there. So we need to, we need, we'll need to present something so that people aren't just stumbling around down there. That issue will be coming up down the road when Mr. Rose makes, makes his decision. Okay. Next. Black Canyon is a big one. I hope everybody had a chance to look at Kimley Horn's document. I thought it was pretty good. I'd love to hear other, anybody else's opinions on that. Anybody, anybody? Yeah, Andrea.
Um, I think it looks very nice. And it, I'm just wondering if it has all the information that we need to move forward.
It does not. And the next piece of the puzzle is the streamlined master plan, which we're gonna have them write up. They've done this before. They've done a streamlined master plan. They called it a vision plan, which doesn't work for us because we got so many vision plans floating around. We, we've used that term to death. But I think Nancy, how do you feel about streamlined master plan?
Um, how do I feel about having one?
What's that? No, how do you feel about using that term? Streamlined master plan. We've gone back.
I don't know. Fine, I guess.
Okay, good enough. Good enough.
We just got a whole master plan.
What it, what it is, is it's the master plan without all of the stuff that's in the, that's in the the Palmer Land Trust document. And, and we, we've generally written these things so that we import of all of that stuff into the master plan. And it's ended up costing us a lot of money unnecessarily. So in fact, that's how Kimley Horn, the Kimley Horn guys, sold us on this is they said that they had been using a kind of mini master plan and it's been successful in getting grants from GOCO. And we said, good enough. Let's do that. So hopefully. And we said, good enough. Let's do that. So hopefully it won't cost fifty thousand dollars or anything close to that. So that's the next step. Um Andrea, is getting that document. And then between those two documents, we've got the alignment and what they already gave us for five grand. And uh the streamline master plan will have everything that we need to go to GOCO and say, give us some money. We're we're poor people.
There there is kind of an interim step here, and that is, um I hope everybody's had a chance to look at this. One of the things that would have been nice is if we were meeting in person. These are huge maps that could be spread out in front of you. And we, when we met with Kimley Horn, we had quite a discussion about these trails and out and back and the trailhead and everything else. Like the next step, I pushed my pushed pushed around up there the other day. You know, there are, there are several questions in this. For example, at the, you can see it where two of these trails come together. They have a kind of an interpretive signage place and it's right up there on the top by the old well wagon road.
Right.
And we had discussion about needing clear boundaries marked at the north end of the po- property because we will get in trouble if people walk over onto um um.
Cedar Heights.
Well, Cedar Heights and and um.
Cave of the Winds.
Cave of the Winds property or uh the Cliff dwelling, Cliff House property. Um, so there's, there's a lot of decisions to make here, oh, you know, with this trail layout. And oh, it ranged from everything that that, you know, if we put some kind of natural playground up here on the top. These guys felt like we'd be infinitely more likely to get GOCO money because they're into that. Or an outdoor education space, we would call it, something like that. So, um I don't know, Tim, we talked loosely. I I know that that Steve and the people that have been working on this from Kimley Horn have walked and walked and trumped all over this property to come up with this layout. But I'm trying to figure out how, I'm wondering if there's any way we could pay Steve um, to actually flag it for us.
He already said he would do that.
Yeah, so that members could go up there and see what you think about the trail alignment and that kind of thing. Feedback that we've given them, for example, on the first run through was, you know, our post.
He already, he already said he'd do that. Uh, we'll do that. We'll make it. We'll set up a a date. The problem that we have that now is that we've had our uh our wrist slap because uh we can't do uh more than two people in a onsite um and an onsite visit without having it filmed and recorded.
Really?
Don't blame me. This comes from Jeff Parker. Don't blame Jeff Parker. This comes from the law, from the law of the land that the uh, the Open Records Act requires that such a meeting be recorded. Um, voice and and video be recorded. Now Nancy, or Nancy, excuse me, uh Denise had said that there was seemed to be some wiggle room with Jeff Parker. If this was um a committee rather than a board or any other quasi judicial operation. So I'm hoping we can get some some wiggle room on that because if anybody needs to have onsite visits, it's OSAC.
Yeah.
But as things stand right now, we can only go up there two at a time. But if they flagged it two at a time, we could go up there and we could do.
I think we really need to push that because it's really, that would be really difficult. And when Denise told us that, she said, you know, you're, you've got to, you can't, you're not supposed to have these site visits. Our site visits are much different than a quasi judicial committee's site visits, you know? We're not going to make any decisions. We're just walking around our own property and we're not, we don't even need. I don't know. I would like more clarification on that.
Go harass, go harass Denise this week, okay?
And and yeah. It's ridiculous. Well, if we get it flagged, well, you got, you guys can all walk up there and see it. But I walked up there yesterday or day before yesterday and I I could not, you know, having seen the map, I was kind of looking for some of the things he pointed out and I I couldn't find any of them. So.
Yeah, we need, we need to get it flagged and and then we need to go whether it's two by two or.
Other thing I want to point, the other thing I want to point out, and this is a big deal, is on page, well, you can hardly read it, six of seven of the plan. Um, we've talked a lot about parking. And and it's pretty much been determined that that parking would be along El Paso Boulevard there. There's a lot of parking that starts basically under, you know, just past the underpass and goes all the way down to the pickleball courts. But Denise seems quite confident that we would need to put in an official crosswalk there. And it is a bit of a dangerous corner. You've got people coming from Garden of the Gods and people coming from Cedar Heights. Some people don't have any idea where they're going.
Nancy, Nancy, that's in the hands of uh
Right.
Uh Juan uh.
Now in the hands of Roy and the and Juan and the people who are in charge of parking. But I just wanted to point it out to the group because we're going to be, we're going to be asking.
They've got a map of that showing exactly what we want to do. And so.
And the expense of a sidewalk up to the trailhead.
Yeah, I don't know about the sidewalk. We don't need a sidewalk. We could have a trail. Going through there, it'd be a hell heck of a lot cheaper than a sidewalk. Yeah, concrete sidewalk and and not really necessary. Yeah, Robin.
I have one question. What's what's the difference between the orange line and the green line? I'm not seeing it in the in the page. What what's the difference between the orange line and the green line on the trail?
I think they're more proposed.
Yeah, the orange ones. Yeah.
Uh huh. Oh, okay. I can't read this thing. That's why I wish we had the big map. But I think that was the idea.
Well, I mean, you, all you have to do is zoom in and you can.
Nope, I can't read it even when I zoom in.
Yeah, I wanted to ask, can we, can we get a separate PDF of this? Uh, it's really hard to manipulate it when it's inside the the um OSAC meeting package. Uh I mean, it's kind of a mess.
I know Jillian said we could print out hard copies, right, Jillian? That you have the capacity to do that?
Yeah, we can, we can print out hard copies on like big pieces of paper if that would be helpful.
That would be great.
Okay.
I used to have a digital copy too. I mean, I'm zooming in and zooming out. It's just kind of tedious when because of the way this thing's formatted, but okay.
You need a twenty-four by thirty-six inch screen.
Yeah.
I think it would, I mean, even if we have to pay for it, I think it would be nice to get all the members map, copies of these maps, big copies of these.
That'd be fine. Uh, this has changed quite a bit. That's, that's the only thing on on that. Yeah, let's go ahead and print out, I mean, to print out ten pieces of paper.
Are we in?
Yeah, Judy.
In large format.
If we get these printed out, would it be helpful then to have a meeting that was in person so we could all work with it together?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I I really liked it when we had a couple of years ago. It was, I found it was very mu- much more helpful.
Let's uh do that in September. That'll be good.
If we, well, we've got to get permission to do it. We've got to get permission to do it.
From who?
First we have to, first we have to decide to do it. So does anybody object, does anybody, just a second, does anybody object to that? To having a in-person meeting in September? Okay, then we'll do that.
Or a whole meeting?
Huh?
Are you talking about the site visit or a whole meeting?
No, I'm talking about the the September um OSAC meeting.
We keep up there?
No, no.
It's with the big maps. Oh, yes, okay. I just think we should print everybody co- copies of this whole.
Well, we'll do that as well.
Yeah, but I think it would be super helpful if we could have a meeting where maybe that could also be projected on the screen. And it's a lot easier when everybody's following it for me on the same, I I on same page.
Right. And Kimley Horn has even offered to do that, to come to our meeting, just so you know.
Well, I think.
That'd be great.
That's helpful.
Um, let's see, what else do we want to talk about here?
Just one second. If people want maps right away, Jillian, um, I know I think all the board members still have a mailbox at City Hall. You could, you could print them and put them in our mailboxes or somebody could maybe.
Do we really?
Is that in the finance department, the mailbox? Do you remember?
They used to be, and actually, they used to be right outside the police station. I don't know where they are now.
Uh, well, I'm happy to bring them to like the city clerk's office. And then if folks want a map, you can just stop by the city clerk's office and pick one up. At City Hall.
Okay, that's great. That's great.
Okay.
And then will you just let everybody know?
See, the other, the other thing, um, and I don't think we need to vote up. The other thing, and I don't think we need to vote on this, is that we need to turn uh Denise loose to pay Kimley Horn for their work. Um, if nobody objects to that at this point, I think we should go ahead and do that. And that way we can start them on the uh, on the uh streamlined master plan. Get an idea of that, what that work's going to look like.
Uh, now that I think we do have to put out to bid, Tim.
Huh?
That that we do have to pit out to bid. That we have to write in our.
We do not have to put that out to bid if it's under a certain amount.
If it's under five thousand, that's it.
Hmm, it doesn't have to be under th- five thousand. I think it's somewhere around twenty thousand, isn't it, Jillian?
Uh, I'm trying to think of the number, professional services under a certain amount, you don't need to put out to bid. And I know it's above five thousand, so I can get the exact number.
Yeah, no, I think it's quite a bit above that. Oddly enough, I thought it was that five thousand. Um, it's five thousand if we don't want to take it to city council. Um, I think it goes up to about twenty thousand. Uh Judith, do you know anything about that?
Uh, I I don't know the exact number. I just know that um anything under fifty thousand dollars, the city, you know, uh, does not have to come to council. So I don't know if that is the same for consultants also.
Okay, we'll get the, we'll get the actual number and.
That's what I think it can be approved by um.
Pardon me?
I think it can. I think um we were told that that um Denise had the authority to approve anything under fifty. So.
Okay, well, good. Let's uh, let's work on that and we'll see. Uh, Kimley Horn uh uh baited us by uh saying that they could do this for a lot less than the fifty thousand dollars that we usually ended up paying in a master plan. So hopefully they can keep going. Um, they've got a streak going with us here.
The payment. So I don't know what we'd have to do other than and pay them, tell accounting to pay them.
Well, we're telling the county to pay them for the five thousand dollars, four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars for the uh, for the concept plan.
Right.
The next step is to get them working on the uh, the the streamlined master plan. So we'll find out where our, where our roof is on that. I think, I think uh they're, they're so connected in this. At this point, I would like to keep them working on this.
Do we need a motion then to it to approve the four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine payment to Kimberly Horn?
No, I think we've already approved that.
Okay.
We already approved that. We're just agreeing that it's, it's done and everybody's okay with it.
And Tim, I know we'll have to come up with a list of outcomes for this streamlined master plan.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. We can, we can do that. Um, all right.
I I have a question.
Moving right along at lightning speed here.
I have a question, sorry. Um, so are we going to do something about this idea? As a group, all of us taking, getting Steve to mark the trail and getting.
Well, the answer is going to go to Denise and beat her up on this and.
Well.
What?
Does it have to be, well, let me ask the question. Does it have to be the thing about someone doing a voice video? Uh, because it's a meeting sort of, do, does it have to be someone who's a member of the committee? Or anybody? You just get Joe Schmo over here who runs a camera to come with us and do this?
Joe Schmo is fine.
So, okay. Um, so I, I'm a little, I would like to get this project going. I'm sure everybody else would. Is there any chance we could start talking about this before it gets to be November and nobody's very interested?
Oh, absolutely, I think. And and.
Well, we, we can go ahead and line up the uh, the flagging of the uh, of the the trails. Flagging's done right, then we can all go up there individually or in twos and follow the flagging.
I'm just saying, I, I don't know why we can't get if we, I guess I'm thinking it the other way. If we set a date and say, we're all going as a group, we'll find somebody. I'm sure Craig would be delighted to do it. Um.
To videotape all of us?
Steve, sorry. Sorry? Craig would do it.
Videotape all of us? I mean, I don't, I don't even know what that's going to look like.
Hey, he, he does, he does horse stuff. I don't think this is a big deal. If you'd ever tried to go horse in a horse show, good luck. But anyway, the point is, um, if I was thinking, if we said to Steve, look, we've set up this Saturday to do this. Can you by then get this thing flagged? I, to me, that's very finite. Plus, it all gives all of us a chance to mark it in our calendars and say, don't step on that date if you want to go. That's, that's what I'm saying.
That's fine, and I have no problem setting that up with Steve. Um, Steve Myers is who we're talking about here. He's, he's the lead on this. Um, I have no problem with that. And uh, we can, we can set that up. And then I can, uh, I think we can legitimately have Jillian uh, send that out in a blind copy to everybody when we get that date set up. Okay?
I, I'm not talking about dead date to get the flagging. I'm talking about setting a date for us to do this after that, so that you.
Well, we have to, we have to wait and find out if we can set a date for all of us to do that. And that's going to take some talking, and that's what Nancy's going to do.
Okay.
My, my philosophy is, is uh, you know, better to do it and seek forgiveness.
I just think it sets it up for everybody to say, well, even if it doesn't happen, at least, you know, we're thinking about on September.
You know, the, the, the question you have to ask you yourself is who's going to object? We're not going to be in trouble until somebody says, oh, they, you know, this wasn't, I mean, we posted, we say we're going to do a site visit. Anybody can come along and if they want to. It's not a controversial topic. People want trails up there, you know, it's, it's just, and I'm happy, I mean, we have a lawyer on 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 the board. I'm willing to talk, to sit down with Jeff, but this is, you know, this is nuts. This is not the intention of a sunshine law.
Nancy, I'm, I'm asking you to go to Denise and ask her what we can do about this.
I will.
Thank you. All right, I'm, I'm, I don't think we should be, we would wisely set up a uh, a group revolt and go up there without.
Not a revolt, it's just people being uh uh innocently doing their job.
That's how things get done.
That's right.
Yeah, thanks for that. Um. Okay, uh Nancy, you want to go over section ten of the post goals?
Well, it turns out, um, I was wrong. We did talk about tech, section ten last time. So for, for my piece, I'd like to um call on Judy. And I were specifically talking about ten point three about fire mitigation and. And Judy set it up and we went down and had a conversation at the firehouse last week. Judy.
Okay, so it was, uh, Mike Willie is their mitigation man. So Nancy and I went down there. And, um, Nancy got first aid there, that was exciting. She didn't even know there was blood running down her leg, I go, what's that? But anyway. Um. And he is very involved and he has, uh, there's a mitigation committee that's meeting and they're way ahead of us. Um, in terms of looking at properties and developing, they did have, they're, they're developing a plan now. Um, for the entire city. For fire mitigation, and they expect that to be done by the end of this year. Apparently, what did he say, I think eight months they've been working on it?
The plan, yeah.
Plan, yeah, so. And then.
Excuse me, Judy, are they doing that on a, on a lot by lot basis or parcel by parcel basis? Or are they doing that on a region by region basis?
I think it was an overview, but I think, um, he was. I, I will say, he was kind of glad we showed up. Because it made it easy for him to talk about those open spaces. And not have to come and find us. Um, and it, it wasn't a long conversation, it was just brief, but we agreed and he agreed to stay in contact with us. And allow us to know how the plan was developing. And also give us, that would be included, guidelines for open spaces. As far, as part of the fire mitigation plan.
He's working with a forester who has, has done this before. Um, he's kind of learning as he goes, and I would say he was real relieved in some sense that we were there because he said they were wondering about open spaces role in all this and, you know, they want, they want to work with us. Uh, one of the things they want to do is, is have, uh, a demonstration. For community members to come and see and, and they thought maybe, uh, that on open space, some open space land might be really helpful. And, uh, he also was fairly quick to say that, you know, even though they will write the plan, they don't have a budget for doing all the mitigation, so, um, once we have a plan. You know, we do have a budget, some budget for fire mitigation, so after that. But we don't want to do something that doesn't jive with their plan, so once they have a plan, we can go ahead and decide to do some mitigation on some of our open spaces.
Okay, did they say anything about the miscellaneous parcel documents?
No.
No, no idea about that.
And then, and then the other part of that was, which I thought was really helpful, is he. I, I sort of asked and he sort of offered, um, to say, he did say, anytime that we want him to come to a meeting, he would be glad to come.
Okay.
But I thought it was very easy to talk to. Um, it was, I think it was quick, but I think we got what we wanted, which is now he knows we're interested. And he knows that we want to help. If we can to get this plan done. And make sure that open spaces are considered.
What's his name, Scott?
Mike Willie.
Mike.
M, W I L I E.
Thank you.
Well, that's great, that's great. Um, so we did get to the fire department.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, is that it for the goals right now?
Yeah.
Nancy, okay, thank you. Okay, um, next item, existing trail maintenance. Um, I'll say a little about this on the Iron Mountain piece and then turn it over to, to Andrea. Um, the Iron Mountain, actually, I should just turn it over to Gillian, Gillian has more information on that than I do. Um, Iron Mountain status at this point?
So I have a draft of the contract out to Traction Trail Works. Uh, Chad's wife just had a baby and so he's taken a little bit of time off from work. Um, but he's gonna review the contract and projected start date is the first week of October. For Iron Mountain erosion.
It was the first week of September.
It's been changed to the first week of October.
Okay.
For, for that specific project.
I'll tell you what we're running into here and, uh, uh, um, what, uh, what's his name again, the owner of Traction, um?
Chad.
Chad, yeah, what Chad said is that if it gets into winter, um, he can't be having, uh, equipment up there that might get snowed in. So we're getting close to that issue.
Okay.
Okay, just know that there's an issue.
Right, and I mean, if he's not concerned about it, at this point, I'm not concerned about it. Um, I will ask if there's any way we can move up the start date, but I can't have him start any work until we get that contract signed, and it's in his hands now.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um, thanks, and I, I guess the other thing to say about this, and I, we've already said a little bit about it. Is that the, uh, the Mile High Youth Corps with Rempey's supervision was only able to get down the, uh, the steps into, which is to say to the south of, uh, Wildcat Gulch. And they left the steps on the, on the gold, uh, staircase, uh, to be done to another date. Um, the other thing is, is a, a washout at the, the first, um, hairpin turn. Um, if you're going up, uh, Iron Mountain, uh, trail. Uh, to the, uh, northwest of, uh, of Wildcat Gulch, there's a, you go up the trail and there's a washout at the first hairpin, it's be, it's been going on for a long time now, it's to the point where I think it's gonna be uh, twelve foot timbers to, to um, repair that, twelve foot timbers, uh, six feet high. To repair that now, so we've got a pretty good chunk of work. That's gonna have to be done there. And it doesn't look like that's gonna get done anytime soon, so.
Julian? Just relative of that, I think we have, we had a three-year contract with Rempey. And I think maybe this has been, this was the last year, do you know?
I think next year is the last year.
Okay, well, if it is, great.
I, I'll, I'll, I'll look at the, the contract just to confirm.
Okay.
But I thought it was last year, this year, and next year.
Okay. Um.
I can speak to that, Tim, too.
Yeah, please, hundred.
Um, well, I met with Gillian and, um, we were talking about some of this stuff, uh, last week and. Yeah, so the Mile High Youth Corps project, um, I mean, they have replaced, um, most of the like. Sorry, my screen is being weird, um, most of the problematic stairs and stuff, and so things are actually looking pretty good. Stairwise, but obviously a very technical project that we probably won't use, uh, Mile High Youth Corps for in the future, uh, maybe focus more on the very basics with them, uh, maybe not just weed removal stuff, but, um, in reference to the, um, the area you're talking about, Tim, um, we talked about writing up a project description for that. Um, and Gillian, and Gillian, remind me what the new, what is his name, um?
His name's Josh Farmer, our new park supervisor.
Yeah, so new person, um, as the park supervisor that's sort of on the trails. And, um, but, yeah, so we talked about, so focusing on that, um, talked about trying to get together some kind of, um, volunteer effort to work on that project. Um, so having a project description and then reaching out to the trail cats, reaching out to, you know, Medicine Will or whoever might be willing to help organize a project day for that, that might be a really good trial run. Uh, to try and figure out that process.
Trail cats, trail cats would be great, uh, if we could get them on that, if they're interested.
Yeah, so there's sort of a plan in place moving with that, um. And we also talked about, um, working on a trail, uh, maintenance project list strategy, and so there's a program, a GIS enabled program that helps um, city, um, map out like where projects might be, um. And we're not quite using that yet, but trying to figure that out, um, and we were talking about just going through and doing a trail. Uh, walkthrough, um, to really just get some of the current, you know, project ideas and any sort of uh, maintenance needs, um, documented there.
Yeah, you've got your, uh, spreadsheet.
Yeah, and so we were gonna then like compare back to that and just, you know, and then try and integrate any concerns that people have.
Okay.
Well, so. Um, and I think. Yeah, I think that's what we mostly talked about.
Okay, um. Yeah, the reason I keep hammering on this is little by little, it's getting close to being a, a significant problem.
That question?
Yeah, Nancy.
Andrea, so when, when, um, the Mile High Youth Corps did the, the stairs with Rempey. Was Rempey with them all the time and Gillian, I thought that, um, I don't know, Brad and somebody else was gonna be there the whole time to learn how to do it as well, did that happen?
We had Rempey there the whole time, uh, Josh was there part of the time, he couldn't be there every day of the project. But Mile High Youth Corps, they had a, they just had no experience with stairs, and so they had to start from ground zero learning how to do these pretty technical timber step builds.
Uh huh.
Uh, and it was amazing that they got the, what is it, the east side of the stairs built, like those were all completed. And it was just the really technical west side, the bottom, I think fifteen stairs. Uh, that even Rempey said their crew, it would take them five weeks to do, so it was just project scope, I think, was a little out of reach as well, but we didn't know that the, the west side was gonna be so technical.
Right, okay, thank you, and do we know? Um, have, has anybody seen, uh, an RFP for the uh, GoCo Rem, uh, Youth Corps grant this year, usually it's out right about now. I, I apparently.
Also talk about that, um, and probably we're not gonna apply for that grant unless somebody here is really excited about doing that.
Yeah, um, as far as, uh, whether Rempey was there or not, I was there the first day when they showed up. And, um, Elizabeth was there for probably thirty minutes. Lining up, uh, Mile High Youth Corps and then she was gone. She took off, so I don't know if that was the, uh, if that's the way it was for the whole, um, project or not, are you sure that people were there?
I'm positive, they did the majority of the planning and the work for that, not the work, but the, they had to be there. The, the project would not have been near completed if they were not there.
Okay, thank you, I'm, I'm really glad to hear that. I was afraid they kind of deserted, uh, Mile High Youth Corps. But that's good to know, yeah, it's good to know they did their job. Um. Okay, let's see. See, anything else, anything else on trails there? Um. David, you've usually got some comments on trails, anything?
Oh, I, I can't find Andrea's maintenance spreadsheet, I thought you sent it to me and I can't find it, so. I don't have anything to talk about.
I'll say the last time I updated that was like a couple of years ago, so just keep.
Well, then what, what are you working off of? If that's, uh, when you refer to it.
Yeah, that's what I've been updating, but it's been kind of like, you know, there've been different people at the city and people's strategies have changed. Um, so.
A lot of work.
That's kind of what we're working on is getting back on track with a strategy there.
Okay. Um. So the last thing is the Western Border Property, and I know, uh, um, Kendure and the, and the, uh, the Ruxton, um, group is working on something, they have their own project going on there. Um, and I'm, I don't think I'm letting any, anything go here, they, they've got a concept that they want to get an appraisal on the, the Midland Railroad bed. And then, uh, use that appraisal as a, uh, starting point for, uh, trying to negotiate with, uh, um.
Jenkins.
Um. Um.
Jenkins.
With Jenkins?
Jenkins, uh, with Jenkins, with David Drake Jenkins and, and his group, I, I don't know what the point of that is, I think. Jenkins can just ignore it, just as well as he can ignore nothing, so. I don't know what they're gonna do, I do have a call into, uh, uh, David Jenkins and, and if anything comes from that, I'll certainly report it, so. That's really about all we've got, and like I said, John's been, John Graham has been able to get, trying to get hold of him for a while. And apparently there's people from this group that have been trying to get hold of him as well. So if there's anything to report on that, I will do so. Um. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Director, um, did we miss anything that you wanted to report on, Julian?
I don't think so, I think we covered most of it, um. I did just want to let this group know that we have a new forestry technician, so this person is replacing what was the arborist assistant position. And it's actually our cemetery caretaker, uh, Aaron Renaud is moving from the cemetery. I, I guess you could only be there so long, uh, but he's excited to kind of dive into a new field, he's been shadowing our arborist for the past year, um, and so we are gonna have a full arborist or a forestry division once again, so. We're excited to get moving on some of those projects, and then we did have Team Rubicon in Manitou Springs over the weekend. They did work in Deer Valley Nature Park and also along Bluff Avenue, uh, it's the, um, this street, and I'm putting that in quotes because basically it's a city right of way between Pilot Knob and Ruxton Avenue. And they did fire mitigation from Pilot Knob all the way over to Mont Calm, so if you get a chance to check it out. Uh, they created a pretty awesome fire break and we're gonna be cleaning.
They're a volunteer group, aren't they, Julian?
Yep, uh, they had three different strike teams in town, so they, they did an incredible amount of work over the weekend, so we were really happy to host them. But that was, that was everything I had on my list.
I, I have a question for you.
Yep.
Um. By the way, I, the, all the work they've been doing are right across the street from me.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's very noisy.
It is, but it's, it's done now, so.
Yeah, and I think they're all veterans. Uh, the team is all vets, right?
Yeah.
Yep, they are.
Oh, now I forgot what I was gonna ask you, go, Judy, I'll come back and answer.
Well, I, I had a question that's not.
Oh, I know what it was. Julian, we have a GIS person with the city now, right?
We do.
Right, I'm just wondering if it would be worthwhile w- once we get this area flagged to get him out there and have him map it on, on, you know, city gear. So that we have our own map. Um, and may, and you know, I don't know at what point, but I just wondered it might, if it might be helpful for him to be familiar with and have the points on the trail so that when we're out there looking at alignments and all that kind of stuff, we've got something besides the maps from Kimberly Horn that makes sense to somebody here locally.
I would, I would think Kimberly can send over there, it's either a CAD file or an GIS file or something like that. Uh, I mean, to that GIS staff person, they, they can talk the same language, they don't need to get out in the field to do that.
Okay.
That work's been done by Kimberly.
Kim, Kimberly Horn, okay.
Can we get it though? Yeah, we just need to get it.
Yeah, they just.
I don't see why not.
We're paying for it.
Yeah, they have paid for it, you're right.
Yep.
Tim?
Yeah.
Tim, when you recognized me a minute ago, I didn't think you were referring to the signage issue, I thought you were asking about trail maintenance.
We skipped right over that, didn't we?
We did, we did.
I'm sorry about.
I need, I just wanted feedback from the group and from Jillian as to what do you, what do you guys want to do about signage, I mean, the signs are just gone, they're missing. In the, in the areas identified on Lower Inman and also on the, uh, what Jillian referred to as the soft surface creek walk trail. There just, there are no signs there, the only people who are using it are local Manitou residents who have been around long enough to There just, there's no signs there. The only people who are using it are local Manitou residents who have been around long enough to explore and stumble upon it.
Well, all trails.
I just seemed like, gee, shouldn't we be signing that stuff?
Thanks, thanks for catching that, David, sorry about that.
I did have a meeting about signs with um Chamber, with um Farley, who's president of the board, and, and the Chamber Director because they are putting, they're putting a sign right on the other side of the bridge behind the chamber. Um, and, and that sign will uh point to the creek walk and will also point to the services that are available across the bridge at the Chamber.
Okay.
Um, and I encourage them to use the same idea of, of our trailhead signs, but I don't know if they're gonna do that. They were gonna go look at them and see if they could do that, so I know that that's being done, so there will be a sign there directing people to creek walk. Um, the other thing is, is I was up on Uptown Trail today, and I was um noticing the good old green, whatever they are, they're green metal standards, and there's a sticker, two stickers on one that, one that says Ring the Peak Trail and one that says you, you'd pass trail. And I'm wondering, I don't know, David, what are you thinking? Something fancier than that, or?
Anything, anything. I mean, those are, those are called carcinite signs, is what they're called.
Okay, well, if, I mean, I don't, if, if, if the group thinks we should do it and you wanna take it on as finding, you know, where are the signs and where are the stickers and all that kind of stuff, at the very minimum, we could do that.
Yeah.
Um, and then I also talked to Farley as the, uh, she's on the um Urban URA Board. And I asked her if there might be some money available for signs from the URA. Um, because the big complaint I've heard is from people staying in motels along the avenue there, especially the avenue towards the east, and they have no idea that the trail is there down by the river, um, you know, and that, that, that the trail runs all through there. And if, if, if you wanted to talk to Farley, um, she said she thought they had a budget for that, and it would be just a question of, you know, talking to her and the, and that board about, you know, they have the money, we have the time kind of thing. If we wanna make some directional signs going from Manitou Avenue along the new sidewalks there or whatever, I mean, shh, they agree that we don't, everybody agrees they don't want a whole lot more signs. But we could certainly do small signs directing people down to the creek walk from the avenue. So that's all I know.
Well, that's real helpful, I think, but Jillian, is there any sort of standard or plan or minimum, or? Uh, does the Parks Department have any standard that we have to stay within or avoid or comply with? I, I have no idea.
Uh, well, I need to look into that as well, but I will say we're moving our sign shop. And by sign shop, I mean, we have two cubicles right now filled with sign-making materials. We're moving it into its own building, so while we're in transition, we're not gonna be able to, to create any signs. But David, your, your file that you sent is awesome. Of all the missing sign locations, that's an excellent start. So now that we have that information, we can get all the templates ready. Uh, and I'm not sure if a style guide is in the post-plan or not. Is it, I think-
We use the city style guide on our trailhead signs. We try to come up with the same colors and everything.
Okay, so we can, we can go off of that for when we create those new signs, but I think starting with carcinites is a good idea, just to get something in the ground. Um, and that's easy, 'cause we could even print stickers for the carcinites and not have to go through our sign shop initially. Um, but I think the file you sent is a great start for that.
Okay, so how, how do I push that? How do I push you? How do I push Parks? I mean, but?
Uh, so I'm, I'm meeting-
What's the next step?
Question. Uh, I'm meeting with our park supervisor tomorrow morning to kind of go over our late summer projects. So I'll, I'll get a timeline put together uh for when we can get some carcinites out there at those locations that you pegged.
That'd be great, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Maybe.
So uh, Jillian, you'll keep in contact with uh David?
Yes.
Oh, I'll, I'll bugger, I'll bugger.
Okay.
David, another thing you might be able to do is um talk to Farley while you're, while you're with-
Yeah, Nancy, I'll follow up with you on that, if I may.
When we know, when, when we know what we want and how much it costs, and then they probably have some choices.
But at least to make that introduction, I'll-
That's great.
I'll do that with you. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Judy.
I just have a totally unrelated to anything question.
Oh, I can't wait.
Feeding the um the guts of the, you know, the information that came with the packet about technical stuff, procedural stuff, and it occurred to me, I have no idea if, if, if you are on the committee, any committee, apparently, for four years, you have to reapply if you wanna be on the committee again, and how do you know and what kind of notice do you get?
Yeah.
You get an email?
I have all of those questions too, and uh I'll be digging into that a little bit over the next few weeks.
Yeah, depending on who's city council, city clerk, some have been better than others, but in my experience, I usually, you know, because our terms are on the bottom of the agenda every time. When your term expires there, and also the president, I tried to tell people a month or two in advance that their term was expiring, if I knew they were gonna read up. But also at times, I've gotten emails from the city clerk telling me my term's about to expire, so.
Well, do you, Nancy, do you have to reapply then?
You do.
You vote the whole procedure?
No, it, it's just a letter.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
I can even send you a copy.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, everybody, is that it?
That's, that too.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Night. Thanks, everyone.